Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, thank you all for joining us. We will start with the Bangladeshi prayers. Om Jnana Tirmindasya Jnana Jana Shalakaya Chakshurun Milikam Yena Tasman Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Manobishtham Stapi Kam Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Kadhamayyam. Birathe Swa Pradhanthikam Mandeham Sri Guru Sri Uda Patakam Blam. Sri Gurun Vaishnavam Shch Sri Rupam Sagrjatam. Sahgana Raguna Thaanvitam Tam Sajivam Sadvayitam Savadutam. Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Fadaan Sahgana Lalita Sri Vishakhanvitam Shch. Namum Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Preesthaya Bhutale. Shrimate Bhaktive Danta Swami Niti Namine. Namaste Sarasvade Devae Gauravani Prachari Ne. Ne Visesh Shunyavadi Paschatyade Shathari Ne. Namum Mahavatanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate. Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradushenamaha. Panchadhatva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam. Bhakta Vataram Bhakta Kyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpate. Gopesh Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusute. Tapta Gaanchana Gauranghe Irathe Vrindavanishwari Shavanusute Devi. Namami Hari Priyeva Ancha Kalpadarubiyascha Krpa Sindubhyevacha. Pati Taana Pavne Bhyo Vaishnave Bhyo Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda. Shri Advaita Gadaar Shri Vasadi Gauravaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram. Hare Hare Mukam Karoti Vachalam Pangam Langgeyati Girim. Yet Kripa Atamham Ande Sri Gurundinataarinam Pramanandam Adavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mishuram. Hari Om Tat Sat. Gurave Gaurachandra Ya Radhikaaya Dattaaliye Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tat Bhaktaaya Namum Namaha. Hare Krishna, Sudhanat Pranam to all the devotees, thank you all for joining us. So first we are going to start with the Necro instruction. So yesterday we started of the first verse of Necro instruction which is Vacho Vegam Manasa Krodha Vegam Jiva Vegam Udara Upashtha Vegam. Ethan Deganyo Vishahayat Diiraha Sarvam Abhimam Pratimus Shisyaad. Wherein in the first couple of paragraphs, Prabhupada is talking about how one should control the urge of the tongue first, right? And Prabhupada is talking about how the tongue, the belly and the genitals are in one line. So when we control the tongue automatically we will control the belly and automatically we will control the genitals. And then the other three which refers to these three, the tongue, belly and genitals are these refer to the gross. And what are the subtle anartha's that we need to also tolerate? That's the urge to speak, the mind's demands and the actions of anger. So if you do all of these three, all of these six things, controlling the mind, controlling our anger and controlling the speech and controlling the urges of the tongue, belly and genitals, then Rupa Goswami is saying we can make disciples all over the world, right? So at least we become, at least our body, our mind will become our disciple, right? At least they will listen to what we are saying later. And then in the first paragraph, Prabhupada is talking about how we should gather experience by seeing or by hearing or by or by forming our own mental speculation, right? And then we discussed how Shabdha Pramane or hearing from one of its authority is the best way to understand and learn things. And then Prabhupada spoke about three kinds of people. One person hears or sees another person getting punished for some sinful actions and then he decides, I don't want to get punished like that. So I will not do those things. So that is a first level student. That means he learns even from others, from others' mistakes also, he learns what to do, what not to do. The second level is somebody like us, right? We are in this material world, we are suffering, we know what the reason now. So now at least we want to rectify our lives and we want to take up the path of Krishna consciousness. But the third level, the third level student is although suffering, so much suffering is there in this material world, yet one does not want to go out of this material world. It's like somebody in jail, right? They are happy, they've got a nice first classroom in the jail, right? Nice AC room is there, bed is there, but you have to come out and break the stones. And then they can go and sleep in the AC prison cell, right? And then they are happy to be there. You don't want to come out of the jail. So we discussed how this material world is a prison house. We've been sent here for reformation and punishment. So after having undergone the punishment of the various trials and tribulations of this life and various opportunities for reformation also that is given, we should ensure that we want to at least get out of this material world. Yeah, and go back on back to Godhead. What is the way that is prescribed, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu prescribed the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra? Simply by chanting Hare Krishna, we can go back on back to Godhead. And then Prabhupada is talking about offenses, right? First thing Prabhupada is talking about is prais chitta. The elephant analogy is given for two places here. One is the analogy for prais chitta, prais chitta, prais chitta means atonement. How the elephant takes bath, comes over to the, comes over to the, you know, to the sand and then he puts the sand all over his body. He takes the trunk and you know, sprays sand all over its body, the body again becomes dirty. So what is the use of such a bath, right? Similarly, we commit sinful actions and Prabhupada especially talks about the churches where people go every Sunday and then they do this confession, right? I've done so and so, so and so, so and so sinful actions. And then they pay money and then they get pardoned for that. And then Monday onwards, they continue the same activities. What is the use of atonement? This is not actual atonement. And then Prabhupada says, what is actual atonement? Actual atonement is awakening of our dormant Krishna consciousness. And then, and then Prabhupada is talking about austerity and celibacy. These are the two primary things that are necessary to control our senses. All the six things that Prabhupada just mentioned, the process can be easily followed if we are controlled in our activities. No meat eating, no gambling, no intoxication and no illicit sex. So that is where it is. And the second elephant offense that is mentioned here is Hati Mata Prad. That means what we blaspheme a devotee, if we blaspheme a devotee, then what happens? We lose the blessings, we commit upper rada, that means we lose the mercy of Radharani. And in this way, our, just like a mad elephant when it enters into a trimmed garden, it uproots all the plants and the trees and everything, everything becomes a mess. Similarly, if we commit the offense of Vaishnava Prad, then if we speak ill of the Vaishnavas then, then we lose the mercy of Shmita Radharani. Then our bhakti latha, which is a bhakti creeper that is slowly slowly growing, that we are trying to grow by the chanting and hearing of Shilpa Prabhupada's books etc., that will be completely uprooted. So that's why we need to be very careful of upper rada, especially the Vaishnava Prad. So now Prabhupada is going to talk about how we need to, the entire process starts with controlling the tongue, okay? So let's move ahead and start reading. Let me share my screen, yeah. Okay, first one must control his speaking power from there. Okay, Vrshebanu Kanyamadaji, go ahead.
Yes, Mataji, Hare Krishna, Dhankavat Pranam.
Hare Krishna, Dhankavat.
First one must control his speaking power. Everyone of us has the power of speech. As soon as we get an opportunity to, we begin to speak. If we do not speak about Krishna consciousness, we speak about all sorts of nonsense. A toad in a field speaks by croaking and similarly everyone who has tongue want to speak. Even if all he has to say is nonsense. The croaking of the toad however simply invites the snake, please come here and eat me. Nevertheless, although it is inviting that, the toad goes on croaking. The talking of materialistic men impersonalist Maya Vadi philosophers may be compared to the croaking of frogs. They are always speaking nonsense and thus inviting death to catch them. Controlling speak, controlling speech however does not mean self-imposed silence. The external process of Mouna. As Maya Vadi philosophers think silence may appear as helpful for some time, but ultimately it proves a failure. The meaning of control speech conveyed by Sri Rupa Goswami advocates the positive process of positive process of Krishna. Engaging the speaking process in glorifying the supreme lord Sri Krishna. The tongue can thus glorify the name, name form, name form qualities and past tense of the Lord. The preachers of Krishna Katha is always beyond the clutches of death. This is the significance of controlling the urge to speak. The restlessness of fecalness of the mind, Manovega is controlled.
We will, we will just discuss this. The first aspect, Prabhupada has completed in the first paragraph, what is that? The urges of the tongue, right? The urges of the tongue, more precisely, Prabhupada is first talking about the urge to speak, right? Yesterday we were discussing about how there are two functions of the tongue. One is to vibrate, that means we speak and the other is to honor Krishna Prasadam, right? To taste Krishna Prasadam. So there are two functions of the tongue, to speak and to taste. Right here, Prabhupada has started speaking about our speaking power, right? Prabhupada says, we should observe Mouna, right? Even in Bhagavad Gita Krishna says, we should observe Mouna, what is Mouna? Mouna does not mean self-imposed silence, Prabhupada is saying here. What is self-imposed silence? That means I don't speak at all, right? That is also not proper utilization of the tongue, right? We've been given the tongue, if we don't use something that is given to us, it will rust and it will fade away. It will not be of any utility value, even we'll forget how to use it also, right? And we can't also not use the tongue. So what is the way in which we can utilize the tongue in avoiding to speak nonsense? We can simply speak Krishna Katha. That's what Prabhupada is saying. Mouna does not mean to remain silent. No one can remain silent, right? We are all, we are all active human beings. We can't sit in a place for five minutes also. We want to do something, we want to hear something, see something, walk across, do something or the other we want to do. So here, Prabhupada is saying we can control the speaking power by Mouna. And what is Mouna? Mouna does not mean being completely silent. Mouna means not speak nonsense, right? How can we not speak nonsense? When we always speak about Krishna consciousness topics, then there is no time left to speak nonsense. Or gramya katha, right? We don't want to speak gramya katha, we want to speak Krishna katha. And here Prabhupada gives example of how the frog croaks, right? When the frog croaks, what happens? The snake knows, oh, the frog is around. The snake comes and eats the frog and goes, right? So in this way, our stalking should not cause a lower destination for us, right? When we speak something, it has to be for our, in Bhagavad Gita Krishna says that Anudvega Karambakyan. Sakyam Priyam Hitam Chayat, right? Abhyasanam, what is that? Abhyasanam Chayva Vanmayat Apo Uchchate, right? So Swadhyaya Swadhyaya Abhyasanam Chayva Vanmayat Apo Uchchate. Krishna is actually talking about the austerity of speech. What does he say? Hitam Priyam, right? Sakyam Priyam Hitam, right? Sakyam means we should always speak only the truth. Hitam means we should talk for the benefit of others and for our benefit. What is the subject matter which will beneficial both to the earer as well as to the person who is speaking Krishna Katha, right? And Sakyam Priyam Hitam Chayat, hitam means for the benefit. And priyam means speak in a, speak in a language that is not, that is not irritating, that is pleasing to others. We should speak something that's pleasing to others in a pleasing way, not in a, not, we don't talk something simply to please others, right? We talk Krishna Katha, but we put it in a way that is pleasing to others. So that the others understand why it is important, right? We do that when we are distributing Bhagavad Gita also. We tell a person, we hear from that person, what does that person's need? And then we tell that person something that will help satisfy his need. How can his need be satisfied by studying Shilpa Prabhupada's books? That is what is preaching, isn't it? And then Anudvega, Anudvega means not speaking in a way that agitates others, right? So Anudvega Karambakyan Sakyam Priyam Hitam Chayat. Swadhyaya Abhyasanam Chayva Vanmayat Apo Uchchate. Swadhyaya Swadhyaya means to study Shilpa Prabhupada's books, whatever we are doing now is swadhyaya. Abhyasanam Chayva means we practice, right? Once we do and then it all goes off in the air, right? Then doesn't stay with us, right? This is Grace Dorakopal Prasas. Whatever habit we take, whatever we start following, we should do it at least for 21 days. If you do it for 21 days, it will become a part of our life, right? Most of us join for the Brahmapurtha program. At least we get up in the morning and chant, forget the quality of chanting. That is a, that is a different ball game altogether, right? At least we are getting up in the morning, we are chanting, at least we are trying to chant properly. So in this way, when we chant Krishna's names, when we speak Krishna Katha, when we engage our tongue in vibrating the holy names of the Lord and speak only Krishna Katha and no gramya katha, in this way, this is the proper way to control the urge to speak. The way to control the tongue is to speak only Krishna Katha. Alright, so this is the first step. So next, what is the next one? Vacho Vegam, then Manasa Vegam, how are we going to control the urges of the mind? That is what is the second paragraph. Okay, so let me share my screen, who will read? Okay, Shoba Madaji, go ahead. The restlessness or fecalness of the mind.
Hare Krishna, Dhankavat Pranam Mataji, Shilpa Prabhupada. The restlessness of, fecalness of the mind, Manovega is controlled when one's mind takes his mind on the lotus feet of Krishna. The Chaitanya Chaitamritamate Gila, 22.31 says Krishna Surya Sama Mayaaya Antakara Yaha Krishna Sahanati Mayaara Adhikara. Krishna is just like this one. And Maya is just like darkness. If the sun is present, there is no question of darkness. Similarly, if Krishna is present in the mind, there is no possibility of the mind being agitated by Maya's influence. The yogic process of negating all material source will also not help. To try, to create a vacuum in the mind is artificial. The vacuum will not remain. However, if one always thinks of Krishna and how to serve Krishna best, one's mind will naturally be controlled. Similarly, unfortunately controlled.
You can continue, you can continue, we'll just discuss this. What is the second aspect? How do we control the mind? Now the next paragraph deals with anger, right? All those six urges, Prabhupada is describing in detail, right? Krishna Surya Sama Mayaaya Andhakar Yaha Krishna Tahanahi Mayaara Adhikar, right? We cannot keep our mind blank, right? Can we be without a thought even for a second? We cannot. Either we are thinking of, you know, what program we watch on TV or we are thinking of what vegetables we need to cut for preparation of boga or we are thinking of, when will my, when will my daughter return from school? What am I going to give her in the afternoon? Or we are thinking of, oh, when is the next cricket match? Something or the other, the mind always keeps thinking, right? According to one's interest, one keeps on thinking something or the other. So there is no way to empty the mind or to calm the mind. Parandhrishwa Nibharta Te, again. What is the, what is the solution to control the mind? To engage the mind in higher things? To engage the mind in doing something that will, that is favorable to Krishna. Anukul Yena Krishna Anushila Nam Bhaktiruttama, right? And even in Bhagavad Gita Krishna says, Anukul Yasya Sangkalpa Pratikul Yasya Varjana, right? To engage the body or to engage the senses in those activities that will help us remember Krishna, the mind also will become focused, right? We will discuss another day, how when you're cooking, will it put one spoon sambar powder, one spoon, you know, asafoetida, whatever we are putting? Whatever we are putting, we should know, if our mind is not there, then we probably put four spoons of salt or we put five spoons of sand, it is not, it is not affordable and it is not edible also, right? It is not edible because, because of, because our mind was not there, we've just done whatever we like, right? So whenever senses are engaged, automatically our mind becomes focused there. Because the mind, there cannot be vacuum at any time, that's what Prabhupada is saying. So if one always thinks of Krishna, how do we think of Krishna? By serving Krishna, right? When we are stringing a garland, we need to know which flower to put. So therefore, mind is also focused, what color flower I have to put, I have to pick. Or how much spoon, how much, how many spoons of salt do I need to put? Depending on the quantity of preparation I'm making. So in this way, when I engage my senses, then my mind automatically becomes controlled. Not that I can make my mind vacuum at any time, alright. Okay, Shoba Madaji, you can continue anger also, similarly anger can be controlled.
Hare Krishna, similarly anger can be controlled, we cannot stop anger altogether. But if we simply become angry with those who blaspheme the Lord or the devotees of the Lord, we control our anger in Krishna consciousness. Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu became angry with the miscreant brothers Jagaya and Madaya who blasphemed us and struck Mithyananda Prabhu. In his Sistashtaka, Lord Chaitanya wrote, Trinadapi Shuni Chena Taro Rapir Sahishnu Na. One should be humbler than the grass and more tolerant than the tree. One may then ask why the Lord exhibited his anger. The point is that one should be ready to tolerate all insults to one's own self. But when Krishna or his pure devotee is blaspheming, a genuine devotee becomes angry and acts like fire against the offenders. Krodha, anger cannot be stopped, but it can be applied rightly. It was in anger that Hanuman set fire to Lanka, but he is worshipped as the greatest devotee of Lord Ramachandra. This means that he utilized his anger in the right way. Arjuna serves as another example. He was not willing to fight, but Krishna incited his anger. You must fight, to fight without anger is not possible. Anger is controlled however when utilized in the service of the Lord. As for the urges of that tongue, sorry, okay, thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna.
Okay Mataji, so we've covered three. One is the urge, urge to speak, the other is the urge of the mind and finally the urge of anger, right? Three examples Prabhupada is giving of three different people who actually made anger or dovetailed anger, right? One of them is the Lord himself, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. He was angry against Jagaya and Madaya, right? Because they attacked Mithyananda Prabhu. Secondly, Prabhupada gives example of Hanumanji. You all know Hanumanji, how he, how, how they set fire to his tail and then using that fire in the tail? What did he do? He destroyed the entire Lanka, of course leaving aside the Shokwattika and Vibishan's place and all that. The entire Lanka was burnt into fire. So this is, this requires anger. And finally, Prabhupada gives example of Arjuna. How Arjuna fought against his own brothers? Initially, he was not willing to fight, but then you cannot fight with a person and not have anger, right? So it is, that is again an artificial imposition on the mind. That's why Prabhupada says Krishna consciousness is not an artificial imposition on the mind. Ah, this is a method by which we are engaging or dovetailing our propensities in the service of the Lord. So Prabhupada gives example of how we can dovetail our, our, our anger propensity in, against those who blaspheme the Lord or his devotees. And this way, anger is utilized in the service of the Lord, alright. Okay, so Sindhu Mataji, okay, you can read this last section or do you have the time? Okay, fine, let's go ahead. Yeah, Sindhu Mataji, go ahead. As for the urges of the tongue, so here we saw already, there are two functions of the tongue. We already saw the first paragraph was about speech. Now we're going to talk about that other, the taste propensity to taste by the tongue, yes Mataji? Have you unmuted yourself Mataji? Yes, go ahead. Oh, not audible, right? Hare Krishna, Mataji, your voice is breaking.
For the urges of the tongue, we all experience that, yeah, my audible. As for the urges of the tongue.
Oh Mataji today, so.
We all experience that the tongue wants to eat palatable dishes. Generally, we should not allow the tongue to eat according to its choice. Bath should control the tongue by supplying prasada. The devotee's attitude is that he will eat only when Krishna gives in prasada. That is the way to control the urge of the tongue. One should take prasada at scheduled times and should not eat in restaurants or sweet meat shops simply to satisfy the whims of the tongue or belly. If we stick to the principle of taking only prasada, the urges of the belly and tongue can be controlled.
Yeah, go ahead.
In a similar manner, the urges of the genitals, the sex impulse can be controlled when not used unnecessarily. The genitals should be used to begat a Krishna conscious child, otherwise they should not be used. That is difficult, but for the biggest children. As soon as the children are a little grown up, they are sent to our Gurukula school where they are trained to become fully Krishna conscious devotees. Many such Krishna conscious children are required and one who is capable of bringing forth Krishna conscious offspring is allowed to utilize his genitals. When one is fully practiced in the methods of Krishna conscious control, he can become qualified to be a bona fide spiritual master.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji. Yeah, so the last three we saw now, what are the last three? The first three were speech, anger and mind. The last three is tongue, belly and genitals, right? Prabhupada is talking about how if we control the tongue, automatically we will control the belly and the genitals, right? Because they are in the same line, he says. And then, how can the tongue be controlled in terms of taste? That one should have only prasada. Secondly, one should have prasada at scheduled times and should not eat outside. One should eat only prasada and secondly, one should eat at a scheduled times, right? This Grace Radisham Prabhu talks about sanctioned, sanctified and regulated. That is what is sanctioned, sanctioned means what is given by the Lord as that can be taken as prasada. That is patram pushram phalam toyam, right? Rice grains, chapatis, rice wheat, basically fruits, vegetables, all of these can be taken after offering to the Lord, right? And in this way, what is sanctioned becomes sanctified. And then, how does it become regulated? It becomes regulated when I have three meals a day or two meals a day, whatever is the number of, number of meals that I schedule for myself. According to that, I should, I should be regulated in terms that I follow that every day, right? Some people also do that I will have sweet only once a week. That means either on a Monday or Tuesday, whatever day they decide. So they decide that I will have sweet only once a week or once in 15 days or you know, twice a week. Depending on how much of austerity one is willing to take. But that regulation is a must, then it helps in advancing in Krishna consciousness. It helps in controlling our tongue, which is basically necessary to advance in Krishna consciousness. And then Prabhupada is talking about the genitals, right? Tongue and the belly, belly is if we don't overeat, right? If we are regulated and we are also not overeating, then it actually helps in the, helps in controlling the belly or in managing the urges of the belly, right? One is, one cannot completely give up these urges, right? Because prasada has to be taken and similarly the, what do you call? Yeah, prasada has to be taken and secondly, we have to regulate it by taking it at scheduled times. And taking sweet meats or sweets etc. also scheduled in a particular week, once in a week or something like that. And then that is, that is controlling the urge of the belly. Tongue is in terms of taste, we honor only Krishna prasada. In terms of belly, controlling the belly, we don't overeat and we are also regulated in terms of having prasada also. And then finally, tongue, belly and then genitals. Genitals Prabhupada is saying we should use our genitals only for begatting Krishna conscious children, not for, not for sense gratification, right? And then even Bhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Chakor he says, later on it comes here. Bhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Chakor says, I will have, I will have millions and millions of children. That means one has to engage in sex, right? To, to begat children in this material world, right? So Bhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Chakor is saying I will have millions and millions of children provided I can make them fully Krishna conscious, right? That is why there is also this Shankaracharya is written. And a guru, a sashat, a janani is a shat, a pita is a shat. So there is a verse which says, one should not become a mother, one should not become a father, one should not become a guru, one should not become a teacher if one is not able to deliver one's dependence from the, from the clutches of this material world, from the clutches of Janmam, Ritu, Jara and Yadi. So in this way, Prabhupada is giving us an easy method, an easy practical tips. How we can utilize all of this? That means the tongue, the belly, the genitals, the urge to speak, the urge to get angry as well as the urge to, you know, urge of the mind. Think of a lot of things. All of this can be controlled by engaging them in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead. Alright. Jagat Grujilapropadki Jay Shragurdevki Jay Anantakoji Vaishnavabrindki Jay Nitaigor Preminande Hari Hari Goll. Hare Krishna, so now let's move on to Bhagavad Gita. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya, Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya, Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Hare Krishna. So yesterday we completed the section of introduction, right? Where we covered several topics including starting with prayers, glorifying the Lord. What should be the mode of a person who wants to understand transcendental knowledge? Then what is the, what is the pramane that is best suited for understanding knowledge? Shabdha pramane or Anumana pramane or Pratyaksha pramane? And then we said Shabdha pramane is the best and then whom we should hear from? We should hear from a pure devotee of the Lord or we should hear from those people who are coming in a bona fide, Guru Parampara, Guru Disciplin Succession. And then we saw that the three topics that are covered are Abidaya, what is that? Sambandha, Abidaya and Preojana. That means we understand our relationship with the Lord and then we do processes. And then whom we should hear from, uh, we should hear from, a pure devotee of the Lord or we should hear from those people who are coming in a bona fide, Guru Parampara, Guru Disciple Succession. And then we saw, uh, that the three topics that are covered are Abidaya, San, um, uh, what is that, Sambandha, Abidaya and Preojana. Uh, that means we understand our relationship with the Lord and then we do processes or activities that will help us awaken our relationship with the Lord. And then finally, Preojana is what is awarded by the supreme personality of Godhead himself. So these, these three are the subject matters, uh, that, uh, we start our Sambandha Jnana, uh, by understanding our Sambandha Jnana when we do proper inquiry. If you don't make proper inquiry, then you're equal to, uh, two-legged animals, right? We have two legs, animals have four legs, but our consciousness is that we are still two-legged animals, right? So what is the inquiry that needs to be done by a person, uh, in order to, um, in order to qualify himself to become a human being is to follow the four recommended principles. No meat eating, no gambling, no intoxication, no illicit sex and also inquire atato brahmajitjyaasa. So by doing this, what does one attain? Uh, one attains, um, the same consciousness that Arjuna attained at the end of hearing Bhagavad Gita. What is that consciousness? Hmm, um, Krishna tells Arjuna, yata ichasi tata guru. And Arjuna tells Krishna, hmm, uh, what does he, what does he tell Krishna? Um, uh, so he says that you do whatever you like and he says, whatever you tell me, uh, that I will do. Karishay, vachanam, taba, right? Whatever you are saying, I will follow your instructions. So in this way, at the end of the study of Bhagavad Gita, we should also come to the conclusion that I will follow the instructions of my spiritual masters who are coming in a bona fide Parampara. And this is the way to advance in emotional service. And then we saw that there are five rasaas. Hmm, what are those five rasaas? We have the Shanta rasa, Dase rasa, uh, Sakya rasa, Vatsalya rasa and Madurya rasa. All the five rasaas entail, uh, the important ingredient of service being present in them, right? And the devotee does not accept, uh, the five muktis, which is the saiyujya mukti, salokya mukti, sarupya mukti, sarshti mukti or sarupya mukti. Uh, he will not accept any of those five if there is no opportunity to serve the Lord. That is why saiyujya mukti is totally out. The rest four is accepted by devotee if there is an opportunity to serve. And then we went on to the five subject matters of Bhagavad Gita. Ishvara, Prakriti, Jiva, Kala and Karma. And we understood that only karma can be changed, uh, nothing else can be changed. And then we saw how, uh, the importance of a bona fide disciple succession is very important. And one has to surrender to such a bona fide guru, render service, be submissive in one's inquiry and then the knowledge would be revealed by the spiritual master in the heart of the disciple. And such kind of knowledge received from the spiritual master is equal to the knowledge that actually Arjuna receives directly from Krishna. And then we saw the entire Guru Parampara, who we have also in our altar, the next five Paramparas. That is, we have Prabhu Pa, Iswain Grace, uh, we have our spiritual master, then we have Iswain Grace, Abhicharanand, Bakiridanta, Shilpa Prabhupada and then we have, um, Shilpa Bhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Chakor, who is Prabhupada's spiritual master. Then we have Gurkeshad, Babaji Maharaj, Jagannatas, Babaji Maharaj. And in this way, our line of Guru Parampara, which is Brahma, Madhva, Godaya, Vaishnava, Parampara goes up to Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and then his guru Ishwarapuri, Madhavendrapuri like that. It goes up to Lord Sri Krishna. Hmm, and you also understand that Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is non-different from Krishna. And he also gave this Tatwa that we studied in introduction, uh, which is called Achintya Vedha Vedha Tatwa. Hmm, we saw that we are equal to the supreme lord in terms of satshit and ananda. That means we are also blissful, we are also eternal and we also have knowledge. But we are infinite dismal as compared to the supreme personality of Godhead, right? Uh, and then one more important thing is, we study Bhagavad Gita not as a conversation between two friends. Uh, but we know that this is a conversation where the supreme personality of Godhead is instructing us through his associate who is Arjuna. Hmm, so with that, uh, let's move on to chapter number one of Bhagavad Gita. Uh, let me share my screen. This is entitled, um, Observing the Armies on the Battlefield of Kurukshetra. It's also called Arjuna Vishada Yoga. That means, uh, Arjuna is having some doubts. Hmm, after, um, after he asks Krishna to do something, he asks Arjuna, Ratam Stapayame Achuta, they take the chariot in between both the armies. And then when he sees, uh, the, the, the entire, um, Kuru clan on the opposite side, Dharma Pitamaha, uh, Duryodhana, Dushasana, Karana, Krupacharya and all of them on the other side becomes bewildered and he says, I will not fight. And then, uh, this entire chapter is spoken by Arjuna only, right? Krishna starts speaking only from the second chapter. So in this, what do we understand? Now we understand, we also understood that, uh, we will get the guidance of our spiritual master or Lord Sri Krishna only when we surrender. As long as we think we know everything, uh, we are not going to get the, uh, the guidance or the advice from our spiritual masters, alright? So let's go ahead, uh, Bhagavad Gita text number one. Dhritharastuva chav, dharmakshetre, kurukshetre, sama vedha, yuyut savaha, mamaka, pandava, chayva, kima, kurvata, sanjaya. Translation, okay, Moshi Madhaji, go ahead. Translation, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki, jai. This is a long parpaat, probably we'll focus a lot on this parpaat, very, very important parpaat, yes.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, Dhankat Pranam.
Hare Krishna, Dhankat Pranam.
Uh, Dhritharastu says, oh Sanjay, after my son and the son of Pandu assembled in the place of pilgrimage, pilgrimage, uh, at Kurukshetra, desiring to fight. What did, what did they do?
Yeah, Parpaat, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki, jai.
Parpaat Ki, jai. Uh, Bhagavad Gita, uh, aangya. Uh, Bhagavad Gita is the, why, is the widely read, uh, thistic, uh, science, uh, summarized in the Gita Mahatma, Mahatma, glorifying of the Gita. There, there it, it says that one should read Bhagavad Gita very, uh, scrutinizing, scrutinizingly, uh, with the help of a person, uh, who is, uh, who is a devotee of Sri Krishna and try to understand it without, um, per, personally motivated, uh, interpretation. The example, uh, example of clear understanding is, is there in the Bhagavad Gita itself. Hmm, uh, in the way, the te, the teaching is understood by Arjun who heard the Gita directly from Lord. If someone is fortunate enough to understand the Bhagavad Gita in that line of, uh, discipline, succ- succession without motivated, uh, interpretation, then, uh, then he sur, uh, surpasses all studies of Vedic wisdom and all scriptures of the world. One, one will find the Bhagavad Gita, all that in con, uh, uh, is, uh, con, contained in other scriptures. But the, but the reader will also find things which are not to be found elsewhere. Hmm, that is the, uh, spes, specific understand of the Gita. It is the perfect, uh, thistic science because it is directly spoken by the supreme personality of Godhead, Lord Krishna. The topic, uh, discussed by the, uh, by, uh, Dhritharastu and Sanjay as, uh, described in the Mah, Mahabharata from the basic principle of, for the, for this great philosophy. It is understood that the philosophy evolved on the battlefield of Kurukshetra, uh, which is a sacred place of pilgrimage from the immortal time of the Vedic age. It was spoken by the Lord, uh, when he was, uh, present personally on this planet for the guidance of mankind. The world, the word, uh, Dharma, uh, Dharma, uh, Shetra, a place where religious rituals are performed is significant, is significant because on the battlefield of Kurukshetra, the supreme personality of Godhead was present on the side of Arjun. The, Dhritharastu, the father of the Kuru, Kuru's was highly doubtful about the possibility of his sons' ultimately, ultimate victory. Uh, in his doubt, uh, he inquired from, from his secretary Sanjay. What did they do? He was confined that, hmm, confi, confident that bo, both the sons and the sons of his younger brother Pandu were assembled in the, in that field of Kurukshetra for a determined, hmm, uh, engagement of the war. Uh, engagement of the, aangya, engagement of the, huh, war. Uh, still, uh, his inquiry is significant. He did not want, uh, uh, compromise between the cousins and brothers and he wanted to be sure of the fate of his son on the battlefield. Because the battle was arranged to be fought, to, fought at Kurukshetra, which is mentioned elsewhere in the Vedic as a place of worship, even for the, uh, uh, denizens of heaven. The, uh, Dhritharastu became very fearful about the influence of the holy place on the, um, outcome of the battle. He knows, you know, very well that, uh, this, this would influence Arjun and the, and the sons of Pandu favorably. Because by nature, they were all virtuous. Hmm, Sanjay was a student of, hmm, Vyasa. Uh, and therefore, by the mercy of Vyasa, Sanjay was able to in, uh, envision, uh, the battlefield of Kurukshetra even while he was in the room of, hmm, Dhritharastu. And so, Dhritharastu asked him about the situation of the battlefield.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji. Very well, thank you so much, alright. So here we see, uh, that we also saw this when we were reading the hundred and eighty important verses, that what is the difference in the consciousness between Arjuna and Dhritharastu? Right? Arjuna at the end of, uh, hearing entire Bhagavad Gita, uh, from Lord Sri Krishna, uh, like we said, right? Yata ichasi tata guru, that's what Krishna told. And then he said, um, you know, let me do, but, you know, um, uh, let me do whatever you are telling me. Uh, karishay, vachanam, taba, right? I will do what you, whatever you are telling me. So in this way, uh, Arjuna, this is the consciousness of Arjuna at the end of hearing Bhagavad Gita. But what happened to our Dhritharastu? Dhritharastu heard the same way that, uh, Arjuna heard from Krishna. Dhritharastu heard from Sanjay because of the, like Prabhupada mentions here, uh, by the mercy of Yasadeva, right? It's only by the mercy of a spiritual master that we get access to the transcendental knowledge, right? So by the mercy of Yasadeva, Sanjay got this benediction to actually hear the words directly from Lord Sri Krishna, right? And he also arrived at the absolute truth at the end of it, right? How do we know that? Like, uh, Arjuna said, yata ichasi tata guru and he said karishay, vachanam, taba. But Sanjay also said, yatriyogeishwara Krishna, yatra partho dhanur dharaha, tatra shridvijaya bhootir, drowa neetir matir mama. Right? He also understood that wherever there is Krishna, there is supreme opulence. So we need to listen to the words of Lord Krishna or his bona fide representative. So we see here, uh, this, Arjuna also understood everything at the end of the hearing the Bhagavad Gita and Sanjay also understood everything after hearing it through the mercy of, uh, uh, through the mercy of Yasadeva. But our Dhritharastu did not understand, right? Dhritharastu was against so much, uh, even after the battle, not just after Bhagavad Gita. Uh, after that, the battle, entire battle was fought. The entire Duryodhana and all his hundred sons were killed. After that also, what did he do? He was, he was staying with the Yudhishtr Maharaj. He was not willing to give up the throne. Yudhishtr was ruling but Dhritharastu was sitting on the throne, like that. And then later on, it took Vidura to come and speak some harsh words to Dhritharastu and then take him, you know? That is why to be connected with the devotee is also very good. Sometimes you are so foolish, uh, in spite of all the good knowledge received. Yeah, somehow we don't want to take it. So that is why if you're connected to a devotee, that devotee will whatever it takes. Whether it is harsh words or whether some, some, you know, some beating on the head, whatever is required, that person will do and like Vidura, he took Dhritharastu. Hmm, no amount of hearing will work, right? Then some practical actions have to be taken, uh, to deliver such people. So that is also very important because importance of a devotee in our life hates us. Hmm, even when we are so adamant not to take up, uh, this path of bhakti, right? Um, so what was I saying? Yeah, so our Dhritharastu, even at the end of hearing Bhagavad Gita, was not, was not understanding the concept. What was, what was being spoken, why it was spoken, what am I, why? Because it all started with a wrong motivation. What did Dhritharastu think? Dhritharastu thought, he knew that this place of Kurukshetra is a, you know, is a pilgrimage place. Uh, so the influence of good people will, will be there because the place is very, very pious. The pious people will win. So he knew in his heart of hearts that the Pandavas are correct, the Kauravas are wrong. But then, he was so bodily attached with his sons. And moreover, more so, more than being attached to Duryodhana. He was more attached to being the, sitting on the throne, right? Although Duryodhana might be ruling, Dhritharastu was so attached to the throne. Hmm, so in this way, since he was so bodily attachment, attached and also, uh, in spite of knowing about the influence of the place, he was only interested in. Uh, you know, like we see when we, when we wear a yellow glass, we see only what is, everything is yellow, right? Even though that particular thing may be a green, uh, you know, a greenery or a vegetation, but we see it as yellow because we are wearing a yellow glass. So although everything was very crystal clear, then the beginning itself, that Pandavas are virtuous, the Pandavas will win in the battle, uh, because Dhritharastu was wearing this glass of sense gratification. Hmm, and he, somehow or the other, he wanted that the, that the, the Duryodhana and his team should win. So he was especially asking Sanjay many times, right? What did they do? Did they give up the war? Uh, then, you know, will the, will the Pandavas, uh, leave the, leave the battle? In that, in which case, what will happen? Who will become the king? Hmm, so in this way, Dhritharastu was very fearful about the influence of the battle and about the influence of the holy place also, right? Because generally, uh, when we are very rajasik or tamasic, uh, then we are, um, we dread getting up during Brahamaurtha. Now, you don't even want to do all those things, which, which might put us into a sadhik platform. Because we want to be passionate, we would rather go, uh, to places where there is competition, where there is, uh, you know, too much of passionate stuff was working, we feel comfortable there. So in that way, we see here, Dhritharastu was very, very tamasic. He himself was not fighting, but he wanted to ensure that all of his purposes would be fulfilled by his son, Duryodhana. He will perform the war, but who, why did he was, he was so anxious, right? After all, Duryodhana is going to become the king. No, because he wanted to be sitting on the throne and he was utilizing his son, Duryodhana to fulfill his own, uh, sense gratification. Hmm, so that is why we see that Dhritharastu did not attain the same result. So we can also introspect, what is our motive behind studying Bhagavad Gita? If our motive is what kind of action should I perform? What should I do? What should I not do? In that, in that mood of humble surrender if you're studying Bhagavad Gita, then the knowledge will be revealed hmm, by Prabhupada through the writings of Shilpa Prabhupada's parpaats, yeah? So that should be the mood and consciousness of studying Bhagavad Gita or hearing Bhagavad Gita like that. Alright, Moshi Madhaji read, Shobha Madhaji, go ahead, both the Pandavas.
Hare Krishna, Dhankat Pranam, Madhaji, Shri La Prabhupada Ji. Both the Pandavas and the sons of Dhritharashna belong to the same family. But the Dhritharashna mind is closed here and he deliberately claimed only his son as Kuru's and he separated the sons of Pandu from the family heritage. One can thus understand the specific position of the Dhritharashna in his relationship with his nephews, the sons of Pandu. As in the paddy field, the unnecessary plants are taken out. So it is expected from the very beginning of these topics that in the religious field of Kurukshetra, where the father of religion, Sri Krishna was present, the unwanted plants like Dhritharashna's son, Duryodhana and others would be wiped out and the thoroughly religious persons headed by Yudhishtra would be established by the Lord. This is the significance of the word Dharmakshetre and Kurukshetre. Apart from their historical and legal importance, Hari Bol, Dhankat Pranam, Madhaji, Dhankat Pranam.
Yeah, thank you, Madhaji. So here, very important point, right? Even as we are performing our sadhana, right? What is the sadhana? Sadhana is cultivation of bhakti, right? We are doing sadhana for the purpose of cultivation of bhakti, right? The seed has been given by our spiritual masters, right? By, uh, Shilpa Prabhupada and Shilpa Prabhupada's representatives. We've got this bhakti lata beecher. And how we are watering that beecher, by chanting Hare Krishna, Mahamitra, by hearing, uh, from Bhagavad Gita, by studying Shilpa Prabhupada's books. Hmm, we are watering this bhakti lata or the bhakti creeper so that it grows nicely and it grows crossing the mahatatwa once, the, the, this bhakti lata has to go at the lotus root of Krishna and then bear fruits, hmm, of Krishna prema. Until such time, we have to carefully cultivate this, uh, bhakti. With, straight from Shraddha, Sadhusanga, Bajanakri, Anratanivriti, uh, then Nishcha, Ruchi, Asakti, Bhava, Prema. Until prema, we need to cultivate it slowly, slowly, slowly. And why is it creeper? It is creeper because we cannot, we cannot ever become independent in bhakti. We cannot say, now I'm very strong, I like a tree, I don't need anybody. I will advance in Krishna consciousness, attain Krishna prema, not at all possible. That is why the analogy is always given for bhakti is creeper. How does a creeper grow? The creeper always is dependent on, uh, other stronger trees, not other stronger plants. And in this way, the creeper grows. So we always dependent on the association of devotees as we, as we water our, uh, bhakti lata or our creeper of bhakti. Secondly, as we water this creeper, what happens? Along with the plant, the weeds also grow. Water the weeds, right? Water the weeds, right? Puti nati, then, you know, the reserve for name, fame, glory, all of this also grows. And with that, when we allow the weeds to grow like this, then the tendency to commit vaishnava prad comes, right? We were studying a network of instruction, like in the previous session, first half an hour, we were studying how this hati mata prad. That means when we commit vaishnava prad, or we talk ill of vaishnava, or we talk about a vaishnava behind his back, etcetera, etcetera, we do. And what happens? Our bhakti lata is not only slowed on the process of the growth, but also cuts to the root of bhakti lata. So how are we supposed to avoid the weeds? We have to be very careful in, in having constant association with our superiors. And always trying to check whenever there is a doubt, to ask questions, to ask whether I should be doing this or not doing this. In this way, with the proper association of devotees, we will be able to cut out these weeds that also grows along with bhakti. So here, the weeds, Krishna is actually referring, Prabhupada is actually referring to Duryodhana as the weeds. At the end of the day, the weeds have to be removed, only then the plant will grow nicely. The plants and the weeds cannot grow simultaneously nicely. As the weeds grow further and further, the plant's growth will be stunted. But if we cut the, cut the weeds and clear the weeds at the right time, right? All of our bad thoughts, our desire for name, fame, glory, everything else, that will stunt the growth of our bhakti lata. We should clearly remove it and take instructions from our guru, how we can cut it out. And in this way, our bhakti lata will grow very nicely. Okay, text two. Okay, let's move on to text number two. Translation and purport by Devangra, Subicharanaravind, Bhakti Vidanta, Swami Shilpa Prabhupada. Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jay. Yes, Neelandani Madhaji, go ahead. And then Sudha Madhaji can read. Any devotees who want to read can raise your hands. Yes, Madhaji, you are audible, go ahead.
Yeah, Sanjaya said, oh king, after looking over the army arranged in military formation with the sons of Pandu, King Duryodhana went to his teacher and spoke the following words. But Dhritharashtra was blind from birth, unfortunately, he was also bereft of spiritual vision. He knew very well that his sons were equally blind in the matter of religion. And he was sure that they could never reach on understanding with the Pandavas who were all pious since birth. Still, he was doubtful about the influence of the place of pilgrimage and Sanjaya could understand his motive in asking about the situation of the battlefield. Sanjaya wanted therefore to increase the dispondent king and thus assured him that his sons were not going to make any sort of uh compromise under the influence of the holy place. Sanjaya therefore informed the king that his son, Duryodhana, after seeing the military force of the Pandavas at once went to the commander in chief Dronacharya to inform him of the real position. Although Duryodhana is mentioned as the king, he still had to go to the commander on account of the seriousness of the situation. He was therefore quite fit to be a politician. But Duryodhana's diplomatic manner could not disguise the fear he felt when he saw the military arrangement of the Pandavas.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. So I, this is again talking about the four defects of a human being, isn't it? Inside, he is jittery with fear, what is going to happen, right? He had to go to the commander in chief, although he is himself the king, he did not like to do that, right? He wanted to have a full control and he wanted everybody to do what he wanted, etcetera, but then he had to go. And then, what was he doing? Just to ensure, because he knew Bhishma Pitamaha, Dronacharya, Kripacharya, all of them had a, had a soft side for the Pandavas, right? Because they are righties and also they were, they were, actually they didn't want the battle, right? At the, till the last moment, they even asked Krishna to go as a peace messenger, to just get about five villages. But what did Duryodhana say? I will not even give that much amount of land, that is obtainable from the, you know, from the dropping of a pin, even that much land I will not give. And that is what led to the war, right? So in this way, we can see here that Duryodhana is having all the wrong intentions, why? Because he's been groomed like that by his father, Dhritharashtra, right? And it is also said that Gandhari also, because you know, the first person who is born, the first child who is born automatically becomes a yuvraj, right? So Gandhari was so desperate, Gandhari and Dhritharashtra that he wanted to have a son before the Pandu could have a son. But by, by the, by the will of the Lord, Yudhishra was born first, right? Although Gandhari got pregnant first, Yudhishtramaharaj was born first. And then what happened? She actually beat her, beat her, you know, womb like that, because the child was not born. So that kind of enviousness was automatically there, right? It passes from the mother to the child. That is why this garbodana samskara, it is prescribed, it is very, very important. Especially for those who are, you know, who are about to conceive a child or who want to, you know, use the, you know, do this activity called sex for the purpose of having children. It is important to do the garbodana samskara, take permission from, from the senior devotees and then chant fifty rounds of Hare Krishna Mahamitra. In this way, when, when the garbodana samskara is done, then there is attraction of a, of a nice Krishna conscious soul in the, in the womb of the mother like that. So in this way, when Gandhari was so envious, because you know, her son was not born before Yudhishra was born. So in that way, so many things, because of that, Duryodhana was born, as he was born, only there was ill omens. Like how in Bhagavatam also we see, when Parikshitma, when Parikshitma Raj is actually, when he is the king, when he is going out, when he is looking at his kingdom, when he is going out, he is seeing all ill omens, right? It is mentioned, so many things are mentioned, you know, the cow does not milk, it does not give milk anymore, you know? And the entire place becomes dark, the sun does not rise on time, like there's so many descriptions are given. So like that, all those inauspicious omens could also be felt when Duryodhana was born. So in this way, although Duryodhana had all the ill intentions in mind, right? Somehow or the other, even, you know, he wanted to kill the Pandava somehow or the other, right? But then this fight had become inevitable. So he was trying to become, you know, pose, you know, as if he's got great reverence for Duryodhana, I mean, a great reverence for Dronacharya, Bhishma Pitamaha, etcetera. So he's going and telling Bhishma Pitamaha, oh, you are the commander in chief, you should not be partial, like etcetera, etcetera, just to motivate. Whereas he himself, right, he's doing the, you know, motivational talk, like motivational speaker, generally they speak, right? Most of them, they don't have the motivation within also, just to satisfy some purpose, they go and speak like that. We see that Duryodhana is going and speaking to Bhishma Pitamaha, Dronacharya and all of them as the commander in chief, motivating them. But within his heart, he himself is not motivated because he is filled with so much of fear. Why is there fear? We can be fearless only when we surrender the lotus root of the Lord. If you don't surrender the lotus root of the Lord, because things are uncertain and we don't have control over our future situation, unless we surrender to that Lord who is in control of all, past, present and future, he will always be in anxiety. But a person who surrendered to the Lord, he knows, right? I always say this, what is not within our control is within the control of our best friend. If we surrender to our best friend Krishna, then we will not have anxiety, then we will not have fear. Otherwise, fear will engulf us, just like fear is engulfing our dear Duryodhana, okay? Text number three. Translation and purport by Prabhupada, Prabhupada Ki Jay, Sudha Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Madhaji, pranam. Oh my teacher, behold the great army of the sons of Pandu, so expertly arranged by your intelligent disciple, the son of Dhrupada. Duryodhana, a great diplomat, wanted to point out the defects of Dronacharya, the great Brahmana, commander in chief. Dronacharya had some political quarrel with King Dhrupada, the father of Dhrupadi, who was Arjuna's wife. As a result of this quarrel, Dhrupada performed a great sacrifice by which he received the benediction of having a son who would be able to kill Dronacharya. Dronacharya knew this perfectly well and yet as a liberal Brahmana, he did not hesitate to impart all his military secrets when the son of Dhrupada, Drishtadumna, was entrusted to him for military education. Now, on the battlefield of Kurukshetra, Drishtadumna took the side of the Pandavas and it was he who arranged for their meditative times after having learned the art from Dronacharya. Duryodhana pointed out this mistake of Dronacharya's so that he might be alert and uncompromising in the fighting. By this, he wanted to point out also that he should not be similarly lenient in battle against the Pandavas who were also Dronacharya's affectionate students. Arjuna especially was his most affectionate and brilliant student. Duryodhana also warned that such leniency in the fight would lead to defeat. Thank you Madhaji, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. Yeah, so here, very important, what is it? So in the, with guru, whenever he teaches disciple, he does not seek for his own personal interest, right? So when, that's why when Duryodhana, I mean, when Dronacharya was actually teaching the martial skills to even to his enemy's son, when Drishtadumna was actually sent to Dronacharya to teach the, to teach warfare. That time he did not reject, saying that, you know, you are my enemy's son, so I will not teach you, no. In those days, they used to teach all chatriyas, only if, you know, of the case of Ekalavya. He did not teach Ekalavya because he was not born of a chatriya clan. But according to rules and regulations of the scriptures, whenever, you know, any chatriya prince wants to learn from a, from a, from an acharya, they will never say, no, I will not teach you, based on some personal vendetta between the fathers, right? So in this way, Duryodhana, I mean, sorry, what is his name? Dronacharya actually taught Drishtadumna, the son of Dhrupada, the martial arts. But now, Drishtadumna has actually taken the position of the, from the side of the Pandavas. So in this way, our Duryodhana is actually telling Dronacharya, right? Is it good to advise our own spiritual master, right? When we are in complete anxiety, when we are, when we are completely fearful, we don't know what is right, what is wrong. And then what do we do? We think of, you know, encouraging our own seniors and by telling them what to do, what not to do. And this in itself is vaishnava prad, this is guru prad, right? That means you're going and telling your own guru what you should do, what you should not do, what whom should we favor, whom should he not favor, right? He's pointing out the mistake of Dronacharya, that's what Prabhupada mentions, right? He's saying that you should not become uncompromising in the fight just because you like them, right? He's talking to Dronacharya, who actually taught his own enemy's son, right? If you, if he had this kind of personal vendetta in mind, when he is doing his duty, he would not even be fighting on the side of the Gauravas, right? Because he always, everybody knows that Arjuna was the favorite student of Dronacharya. But they were following the rules and regulations of the warfare. And in this way, Dronacharya, although his affectionate student was Arjuna, he was actually fighting on the side of the Gauravas, right? Similarly with our Bhishma Pitamaha, similarly with Kripacharya, right? Why? Because they were all, they were all had to, they all had to be in the side of the ruling king, right? Who was currently Duryodhana. Actually, it made that Duryodhana became, because Dhritharashtra was blind and in this way, Duryodhana got the yuvraj thing, right? So because of that, when Duryodhana became the yuvraj, what, what happened to Dhritharashtra? Dhritharashtra was like thinking, somehow the war can be avoided and then Duryodhana can continue to rule. Will, will the, will the, will the place, what is that, will the influence of Kurukshetra actually bring about a result that is not in the saber? So in this way, Dhritharashtra passed on all of this to his son, Duryodhana, who was also displaying all these diplomatic tendency. But in this way, he was committing a prad actually. Alright, let's move on to text number four. Okay, hold ready, Vrsammanu Kanya Madhaji, go ahead. Here in the army.
Hare Krishna, Dandatpanama, Madhaji. Here in army are many heroic bowmen equal in fighting to Bhima and Arjuna. Great fighters like Yudhana, Viraja and Mopada. And Rupad, Purpad. Even though Drishtadumna was not a very important obstacle in the face of Dronacharya's very, very great power in the military art, there are many others who were causes of fear. They are mentioned by Duryodhana as great tumbling blocks on the path of victory. Because each and every one of them was as formidable as Bhima and Arjun. He knew the strength of Bhima and Arjuna and thus he compared to others with them.
Hare Krishna. Yeah, Hare Krishna. So when do we compare? When we are fearful, when we are not confident of our own strength, we compare ourselves with others. When we are confident of our work, we compare with whatever we have done in the past. Am I getting better in what I am doing? And that is a proper, that is a proper competition, right? When we compare with what we have been, what we have been doing in the past and how can we better ourselves now? That is a, that is a proper competition that we can keep. But when we are competing with somebody else, how I can overthrow that person? How I can do something by which other person can be, can be stunted in the way he is doing his work? By putting down another person, you should not try to grow. You should try to grow by increasing our own efficiency in the process, what we are doing, right? That is the best way to actually advance in whatever field we are in, right? The best way to advance is not to, not by overpowering others, not by pulling down others, but by actually stepping up in whatever we are doing in a nice way like that. Okay, text number five. Yes, Vrsammanu Kanya Madhaji, go ahead.
Yes, Madhaji, Hare Krishna. There are also, there are also great heroic powerful fighters like Drishtakeethu, Chekitana, Kesaraj, Puruchit, Puntiboj and Saibya.
So now, Duryodhana is also describing who are all the powerful fighters, just to give confidence, to increase the confidence of Dronacharya. X six. Yeah, go ahead Madhaji, Vrsammanu Kanya Madhaji.
There are the mighty Yudhmanu, the very powerful Utta. Utta Majya, the son of Subhadra and the son of Dhrupadi. All these warriors are great chariot fighters.
Yeah, Madhaji, translation, but for your, for your information.
For your information, best of the Brahmanas, let me tell you about the captain who are, who are especially qualified to lead my military forces.
Okay, so first he is saying who are all there in the opposite party. Now he is saying who are all there in my part, in my team, who are especially qualified to defeat all of them, yes. Now from here is Duryodhana's party, yes, Madhaji. Madhaji, not audible, okay. There are personalities like you, Bhishma, Karana, Kripa, Ashvat Thama, Vikarna, okay, Sindhu Madhaji, go ahead. Are you there? Okay, Rohini Madhaji, go ahead.
Pranam, Madhaji. Tera personalities like you, Bhishma, Karana, Kripa, Ashvat Thama, Vikarna and the son of Somadatta called Bhurishvara, who are always victorious in battle. Purpad by Shri La Prabhu Pad, Shri La Prabhu Pad Ki Jay. Duryodhana mentions the exceptional heroes in the battle, all of whom are ever victorious. Vikarna is the brother of Duryodhana, Ashvat Thama is the son of Dronacharya and Somadatti of Bhurishvara is the son of the king of the Bhali Khas. Karne is the half brother of Arjuna, as he was born of Kunti before her marriage with King Pandu. Kripacharya's twin sister married Dronacharya.
Yeah, so here Vikarna is the brother of Duryodhana, so why is he mentioning Vikarna? Because Vikarna was the only person when Dhrupadi was disrobed in the, in the, in Hastinapur. Dhrupadi, Vikarna was the only person in the entire Duryodhana brothers, they were hundred brothers, right? Only Vikarna was the only person who said what, what Duryodhana was doing was wrong. So that is why Vikarna, although he was not very powerful in the battle, Duryodhana is actually mentioning his name. And then Ashvat Thama, we know is the son of Dronacharya, who later on is called as Brahma Bandhu. Why? Because he actually releases this, he kills the five sons of Dhrupadi in the evening when they were sleeping actually, right? Thinking them to be the Pandavas. So in this way, he is also telling who are all there in his own army. And of course, Karana, we all know the, know the Karana story, how Karana is the son of Kunti, right? Born of the, born with the sun god. So in this way, the son of Surya and Kunti Devi, right? And Karana was, Karana was born before her marriage actually. And Kripacharya's twin sister married Dronacharya, Dronacharya's wife is Kripi and their son is Ashvat Thama. So like this, he is describing all of the warriors in his own army. X nine, yes, Madhaji, go ahead. Text nine, yes, Mathaji, go ahead. Rohini, Mathaji, are there? Oh, sorry, okay, yeah, he's unmute, yeah.
Anyeja Bahavashru Shru Ra Madharte Tatva Jee Vitaha Na Na Shastra Harsha Sarve Yudha Vishara Daaha. There are many other heroes who are prepared to lay down their lives for my sake. All of them are well-equipped with different kinds of weapons and all are experienced in military science. Perpad, as far as the others are concerned like Jayadrathak, Kritavarma and Shalya, all are determined to lay their lives for Duryodhana's sake. In other words, it is already concluded that all of them would die in the battle of Kurukshetra for joining the party of the sinful Duryodhana. Duryodhana was of course confident of his victory on account of the above-mentioned combined strength of his friends.
Yeah, so very wonderful, isn't it? This is already concluded because what is, what is Duryodhana saying here? They are all prepared to lay down their lives for my sake. So here, winning of the battle, winning the battle was not at all there in Duryodhana's mind, right? He's already concluded that they are going to lose. That is why he is going and artificially trying to motivate Dronacharya because he is convinced that Dronacharya, Kripacharya, Bhishma Pitamaha, none of them are going to actually work and fight for his own army, although they are part of, they are part of Duryodhana's army. Because he already is thinking that I am going to lose because all of these people are not going to support me. Although they are in my side, they are going to fight for the, for the purpose of the Pandavas because they are affectionate towards them, right? And Prabhat very beautifully says, the conclusion of the battle is already determined here. That the Pandavas are going to be victorious. From Duryodhana's own mouth, where he says, everybody is going to lay, everybody is laying down their lives for my sake like that. Yes, Madali. Text ten. Aparyaptam Tadasma Kam Balam Bhishma Virakshitam Pariyaptam Dhitam Itesham Balam Bhima Virakshitam.
Translation, our strength is immeasurable and we are perfectly protected by grandfather Bhishma. Whereas the strength of the Pandavas, carefully protected by Bhishma, is limited. Perpad, here in an estimation of comparative strength is made by Duryodhana. He thinks that the strength of his armed forces is immeasurable, being specifically protected by the most experienced general grandfather Bhishma. On the other hand, the forces of the Pandavas are limited, being protected by a less experienced general Bhima, who is like a pig in the presence of Bhishma. Duryodhana was always envious of Bhima because he knew perfectly well that if he should die at all, he would only be killed by Bhima. But at the same time, he was confident of his victory on account of the presence of Bhishma, who was a far superior general. His conclusion that he would come out of the battle victorious was well-acceded.
Yeah, so again, a very important point here is that he is cheating himself, right? He is not very clear. He wants to win the war, but he thinks people around him are, you know, some kind of traitors who are in his side, but they don't want to support him. They'll be affectionate towards the other side, right? So much of incoherence in his thought, in his word and in his deed. And the way he is speaking, what he is speaking, most of the time, he is not even, he does not even know whether he is confident that he will win the war because he's got so many generals, Dakshani senas, who are there in Duryodhana's army are much, much higher when compared to, what is this, Dutistra's army or Arjuna's army. But yet, he is filled with so much of fear, that he is not, that he is speaking incoherently. In one verse, he is saying, everybody is laying down, laying down their lies for us and then he is saying, I am confident of Bhishma Pitamaha because our army is under the commander-in-chief of Bhishma Pitamaha, while theirs is under the, under Bhima, right? Bhima is also very powerful, he is also envious of very Bhima, Bhima. Because in many times in the maze, maze fight, even when there are small children, they will always be defeated, he would always be defeated by Bhima. So he always considered him as a competitor. So he is just trying to put down Bhima by saying, we have Bhishma Pitamaha and Bhima is just like a fig in front of Bhishma Pitamaha. If that be the case, and was really convinced like that, he should really not be fearful, but he was. Yeah, alright, Sindhu, Mathaji, if you are there, would you like to read? Okay, I think Mathaji, you know that, okay, Mathaji, Rohini, Mathaji, you can do. Okay, Sindhu, Mathaji is there, okay, go ahead. Text eleven. Text eleven.
Are you any issue, sir? Issue, am I audible?
Yes, yes, Mathaji, go ahead.
Ayamichu Sarbeshu Yata Bhagam Avastit Bhishmam Eva Birakshantu Bhavanta Sarve Evahe. Translation.
All of you must not.
Shri La Prabhu, Shri La Prabhu Padki Jaye, Mathaji scream.
No, Mathaji, your voice is breaking, Mathaji. I think something is, maybe your internet is not okay. Okay, we'll ask Rohini, Mathaji, to read and then you will try yours later. Yeah.
Translation, all of you must now give full support to grandfather Bhishma as you stand at your respective strategic points of entrance into the phalanx of the army. Perpad, Duryodhana after praising the prowess of Bhishma further considered that others might think that they had been considered less important. So in his usual diplomatic way, he tried to adjust the situation in the above words. He emphasized that Bhishma Deva was undoubtedly, undoubtedly the greatest hero, but he was an old man, so everyone must especially think of his protection from all sides. He might become engaged in the fight and the enemy might take advantage of his full engagement on one side. Therefore, it was important that the other heroes not leave their strategic positions and allow the enemy to break the phalanx. Duryodhana clearly felt that the victory of the Kuru's depend on the presence of Bhishma Deva. He was confident of the full support of Bhishma Deva and Dronacharya in the battle because he was, because he well-knew that they did not even speak a word where Arjun's wife Dhruvadi in her helpless condition had appeared to them for justice while she was being forced to appear naked in the presence of all the great generals in the assembly. All he knew that the two generals had some sort of affection for the Pandavas. He hoped that these generals would now completely give it up as they had done during the gambling performances.
Yeah, so, so again and again, we can see how Duryodhana is very, very confused, right? He is just trying to motivate Bhishma, now, now that he talked about Bhishma Pitamaha, he is thinking that everybody else will think that I am only relying on Bhishma Pitamaha. So if everybody else don't perform, then that is fine. And then he is wondering, you know, whether Bhishma Pitamaha himself would support him or whether he will, he will also act on in favor of the Pandavas. And then therefore he is trying to, you know, like, you know, what do you call, flatter everybody? Trying to flatter everybody, saying that you are all very important to me, you all have to fight and you all have to give your best. In this way, he was, he was pleading with all of them actually indirectly. And secondly, he was hoping that just like Bhishma Pitamaha and all of them were quiet and they do not even say a word when Dhruvadi's vastraharan happened. He was, he was thinking that although they had affection at that time also, but did not say anything. So similarly even now, they will fight, they will fight for my, for my Hita, for my benefit, even though they have this affection for the Pandavas like that. Okay, so we can understand that Duryodhana was totally confused and he was trying every single thing that could somehow make him win the war like that, yeah. Tasya Sanjanay Anharsham Kuru Vridha Pita Mahaha Simhana Agamina Dyo Chai Shankam Dattmo Pratapaman. Okay, there are you now, Rohini, Mathaji, can't find you. Yeah, go ahead.
Then Bhishma, the great valiant grandson of the Kuru dynasty, the grandfather of the fighters blew his conch shell very loudly, making the sound like the roar of a lion giving Duryodhana joy. Perpad, the grandson of the Kuru dynasty could understand the inner meaning of the heart of his grandson Duryodhana and out of his natural compassion for him, he tried to cheer him by blowing his conch shell very loudly, befitting his position as a lion. Indirectly, by the symbolism of the conch shell, he informed his depressed grandson, Duryodhana, that he had no chance of the victory in the battle because the supreme lord Krishna was on the other side. But still it was his duty to conduct the fight and no pains would be spared in that connection.
Yeah, so this is very, very important. What is this? Even Bhishma Pitamaha, like, like we saw Duryodhana, I mean, Dronacharya, he taught the enemy, his, his own enemy's son, the warfare, right? Knowing well that in future, this person can actually come against him and fight with him in the war. But we can see that all of them are, how they are determined to perform their duty irrespective of all situations, right? Here also Bhishma Pitamaha is blowing the conch because he is on the side of Duryodhana just to encourage Duryodhana. But Prabhat is saying that the symbolism of the conch shell is, what he intended to, to tell, to tell Duryodhana is that there is no chance of victory for his side because Krishna was on the other side. Yet, his duty to conduct the fight, he would do his best, right? That is what we are all supposed to do. That is what is expectation of the Lord also, that we simply do our best in the discharge of our duty and we don't worry about what is the result of our actions. In that way, we will be successful like that. Okay, so let's move on, I think we have, we have time for one more verse. We'll just do that and then we'll do Hari Nam Sangirtan and then we'll end. Yes, Mathaji. Tata Shankascha Bhir Yuscha Panavana Kgo Mukha Sahasai Babya Hanyanta Sa Shabdashumilo Bhavat.
Translation, after that the conch shells, drums, bugles, trumpets and horns were all suddenly sounded and the combined sound was tumultuous.
Yeah. Yes, Mathaji, go ahead. Tata Shvetair Haayar Yukte Mahatisyandini Sidhavumadava Pandavas Chai Ba Divyo Shankav Pradatmatuhu.
Translation, on the other side, both Lord Krishna and Arjuna stationed on a great chariot drawn by white horses sounded their transcendental conch shells. Perpad, in contrast with the conch shell blown by Bhishma Deva, the conch shells in the hand of Krishna and Arjuna are described as transcendental. The sounding of the transcendental conch shells indicated that there was no hope of victory for the other side because Krishna was on the side of the Pandavas. Jayastu Pandu Putra Nam Ye Sham Pakshe Janardana. Victory is always with persons like the sons of Pandu because Lord Krishna is associated with them. And whenever and wherever the Lord is present, the goddess of fortune is always there because the goddess of fortune never lies, lives alone without her husband. Therefore, victory and fortune were awaiting Arjuna as indicated by the transcendental sound produced by the conch shell of Vishnu or Lord Krishna. Besides that, the chariot on which both the friends were seated had been donated by Agni, the fire got to Arjuna and this indicated that this chariot was capable of conquering all sides, wherever it was drawn over the three worlds.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathaji. So in this way, we see that there was nothing mentioned as transcendental when Bhishma Pitamaha do the conch. In fact, Prabhat mentions that it is symbolism to declare that Duryodhana was actually going to lose because Krishna was on the other side. And then finally, when the, when the Pandavas army, when they start doing the conch, Krishna starts blowing the conch. Panchajanyam Rishi Kesho Deva Dattam Dhanaja, right? In this way, when Krishna starts blowing the conch, it is mentioned that the sound was transcendental. And then four reasons are mentioned here, by Shlapropad. The reasons why the, the son of, I mean, Yudhishthi Maharaj or the side of Arjuna would be victorious in the battle. What are those? One, transcendental conch shells. The conch shells themselves were transcendental and the sounds produced were also transcendental. Secondly, Krishna was personally present on the side of the Pandavas. Jayastu Pandu Putra Nam Ye Shem Pakshe Janardana. Janardana means of, Janardana means one who maintains the whole world, right? The one who maintains the whole world, he will ensure that the victory is maintained for the Pandavas. So the second reason is the presence of Krishna himself. And Krishna is also told here as the Madhava. What is Madhava? Madhava means the husband of the goddess of fortune, right? Wherever Krishna is, the goddess of fortune is also there because the wife never lives without her husband. So in this way, the goddess of fortune, she is there, that means fortune is there. So in that way, the, there is assurance of victory for the side of the Pandavas. And then finally, the, the fourth one is, they also have this, the chariot. The chariot was donated by Agni Deva. And because of the chariot, which was, which Krishna himself was, was, was driving this chariot, right? This chariot was given by Agni Deva and that is another reason why the Pandavas going to be victorious. More reasons will come ahead, right? Hanumanji's, Hanumanji's, they are on the flag of Arjuna and the Arjuna's chariot. So all of that will come later. So in this particular perpad itself, Prabhat indicates four, four reasons how Pandavas will be ultimately victorious in the battle, right? So with this, we will end, from tomorrow, we will start with text number fifteen, right? So this is, this is, okay, that's actually this verse, Panchajanyam Rishi Kesha. So let's do that also, okay? Panchajanyam Rishi Kesho Deva Dattam Dhanaja Tondram Dattmo Mahashankam Bhima Karma Vrko Daraha. So Krishna blew his conch shell, Panchajanya. Okay, let me share the screen. Rohini, Mathaji, you are there, you are able to unmute? Yeah, okay, go ahead. Lord Krishna blew his, yeah.
Lord Krishna blew his conch shell called Panchajanya. Arjuna blew his, blew his, the Deva Datt. And Bhima, the voracious eater and performer of the Herculean task, blew his terrific conch shell called Poundra. Shall I read the perpad?
Yes, Mathaji, go ahead, we'll finish through this.
Perpad, Lord Krishna is referred to as Rishi Kesha in this verse because he is the owner of all senses. The living entities are part and parcel of him and therefore the senses of the living entities are also part and parcel of his senses. The impersonalist cannot account for the senses of the living entities and therefore they are always anxious to describe all the living entities as senseless or impersonal. The Lord situated in the hearts of all living entities directs their senses, but he directs in terms of the surrender of the living entity. And in the case of a pure devotee, he directly controls the senses. Here on the battlefield of Kurukshetra, the Lord directly controls the transcendental senses of Arjuna and thus his particular, particular name is Rishi Kesha. The Lord has different names according to his different activities. For example, his name is Madhusudana because he killed the demon of the name Madhu. His name is Govinda because he gives pleasure to the cows and to the senses. His name is Vasudeva because he appeared as the son of Vasude. His name is Devaki Nandana because he accepted Devaki as his mother. His name is Yasoda Nandana because he awarded his childhood pastimes to Yasoda at Brindavan. His name is Partha Sarthi because he worked as chariator of his friend Arjuna. Similarly, his name is Rishi Kesha because he gave direction to Arjuna on the battlefield of Kurukshetra, Hari Bol. Arjuna is referred to as Dhannanjaya in this verse because he helped his elder brother in fetching wealth when it was required by the king to make expenditure for different sacrifices. Similarly, Bhima is known as Vrakodara because he could eat as voraciously as he could perform Herculean tasks such as killing the demon Hidimba. So the particular types of conch shells blown by the different personalities on the side of Pandavas, beginning with the lords, were all very encouraging to the fighting soldiers. On the other side, there were no such credits, nor the presence of Lord Krishna, the supreme director, nor that of the goddess of fortune. So they were predestined to lose the battle and that was the message announced by the sounds of the conch shells. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you. So we see that, you know, the names are kept according to, according to the leelas that were performed, especially of Lord Krishna. You see how he is called Govinda, which is the master of the senses and then because he gives pleasure to the senses and to the cows, he is called Rishi Kesha because he, he actually is the master of all the senses like that. And similarly, even if we see Arjuna, right? Arjuna is also addressed here as Dhannanjaya, one who brought a lot of wealth. And even Bhima is addressed as Vrakodara because he could eat nicely, right? But nowadays, the names are tinku, binku like that, right? No meaning at all, right? And moreover, the names are kept as soon as the child is born. So there is hardly, you know, the, the nicknames are also which are kept later, hardly have any relevance to the quality of the person or not, right? All the, it is all a matter of convenience, right? What is easy for us to call, like that we keep calling people, you know, with no sense, right? But we see that in the, even in the, even in the Bhagavatam pastimes, we see Harshushoka. That means he is going to give both pleasure as well as distress. So like that, even, you know, until, until even the beginning of Kalyuga, right? We can even see, Parikshit was named Parikshit, right? Beginning of Kalyuga, it was called Parikshit because he was examining everyone. Who, who is the person who saved me like that, right? So in those cases, the names were kept according to what they were going to show, the qualities that they were going to show or the qualities that they were going to depict in their particular pastimes. So because, because they were proper astrologists who could see the horoscope and in that way, the names were given. But nowadays, there are no proper astrologists also who can predict anything and now the names are just kept according to the, you know, whatever the names the parents like. Or sometimes, you know, people call any name, at least it is said that, you know, in the, when the name-giving ceremony is performed, right? At that time, whatever name is given to the child, the child, the child is called by that name throughout his life, that also increases, you know, the Satviguna for the child, right? Because that, because that is, the, what is it called? Nava Karana, that is also a, that is also a kind of yajya that is performed. So that is why they said that one should be called by the name that was given at the time of this performance of this. So that is why it is said that one should be called by the name that was given at the time of this performance of this sacrifice, which is called Namakaran. But now, we, nobody calls anybody by their name, right? They just call it tinku, pinku, you know, some name which they feel, uh, you know, comfortable, cozy with that person like that, they call. Hmm, so in this way, we see, uh, that all of the, all of them have some, um, value. It is not that anything is happening by chance, right? Prabhupada says, nothing happens by chance, everything has a reason. And that's how it was, uh, we are, by studying Prabhupada, we are trying to understand the reasons why certain people were named certain, in a certain way. Uh, why certain decisions were arrived at in the battle of Kurukshetra. Everything Prabhupada is actually giving us well in advance. Hmm, yes, just in the first chapter and in the purport, we almost understand then their conclusions of the Bhagavad Gita. Hmm, thanks to Shri La Propa, Jagat Guru Shri La Propa ki, Jai Grant Raj Shrimat Bhagavad Gita ki, Janant Kuti Veshnamavind ki, Jai Nataigor Pemlande Hari Hari Bol. Hare Krishna, so then, we will quickly do Harinam Sankirtan. And devotees can switch on your cameras, we will see who are all there at the end of the session. Um, we will do Harinam Sankirtan now. नम्मा ओम विष्णु पदाय विष्णु प्रेषाय भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति वेदांता स्वामिनीति नामिने नमस्ते सर्वस्वते देदे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने निल्विशेषाल शुन्यवादी पास्त्र चारी शोधारिने जय श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य प्रभो नित्यानंदा श्री अद्वैता गगगार शिवसाधी गौरभक्त विन्दा जय श्री कृष्णा चे तन्य प्रभु नित्यानंदा श्री अद्वैता गगगार शिवसाधी गौरभक्त विन्दा हारे कृष्णा, हारे कृष्णा कृष्णा कृष्णा, हारे, हारे हारे राम, हारे राम राम राम, हारे 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 कृष्णा, हारे कृष्णा कृष्णा कृष्णा, हारे, हारे हारे राम, हारे राम राम राम, हारे 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 कृष्णा, हारे कृष्णा कृष्णा कृष्णा, हारे 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 राम, हारे राम राम राम, हारे 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 कृष्णा, हारे कृष्णा कृष्णा कृष्णा, हारे 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 राम, हारे राम, राम राम, हारे हारे जय दोरनिताय, जय दोरनिताय दोरनिताय, जय दोरनिताय जय राधा माधा, राधा माधा राधा माधा, जय श्री राधा माधा, जय राधा शमसुंदर राधा, शमसुंदर राधे, राधे जय राधा, रासबिहारी राधा रासबिहारी राधा, रासबिहारी श्री राधे, जय कृष्णा बल राम, जय राधे श्याम, जय कृष्णा बल राम, जय राधे श्याम, जय सीता राम, जय लक्ष्मण हनुमान, जय सीता राम, जय लक्ष्मण हनुमान, जय पंचतत्वा, जय पंचतत्वा, पंचतत्वा, जय पंचतत्वा, जय जय प्रभुपात, प्रभुपात प्रभुपात, प्रभुपात जय, जय गुरुदेव जय गुरुदेव, जय गुरुदेव जय श्री ला गुरुदेव निताय, गौरहरि बोल हरि बोल, हरि बोल, हरि बोल Harinam Sankirtan ki, Jai Jagat Guru Shri La Propaad, Shri La Gurdev ki, Janant Kuti Veshnamavind ki, Jai Samidh Vaktavind ki, Jai. All glories, assembled devotees, Hare Krishna, all glories, assembled devotees, Hare Krishna. All glories, assembled devotees, Hare Krishna, all glories, all glories. All glory to Shri Shri Guru and Shri Gaurav Shri La Propaad ki, Jai, Hare Krishna. Okay, so let's see who are all there today. Um, Moashmi माधवजी is there, Rohini माधवजी is there, Shobha माधवजी, Rishabhanu Kanyam माधवजी, Moni Malam माधवजी is there, Vanmali Prabhu is there. Malam माधवजी, I think she switched on her camera for the first time. Thank you, just seeing you for the first time today. Uh, Anjanam माधवजी is there, Sneha Prabha माधवजी is there, alright. Hare Krishna, thank you all for joining in, Jagat Guru Shri La Propaad, Shri La Gurdev ki, Janant Kuti Veshnamavind ki, Jai Nataigor Pemlande Hari Hari Bol. So, um, everyone can read themselves now, is this okay, the way we are going, um, in terms of study, is it fine? Anyone has any suggestions? Uh, you know, we will go a little faster, slower, uh, going into too many details, not touching upon details. So whatever is your feedback, you can share that. Supplantingly, we can try to, um, you know, um, increase the pace or decrease the pace or as it is known.
माधवजी is, uh, is going very well. And it's so interesting, it, it came so interesting. Uh, I can't, uh, explain, uh, explain also.
Hare Bol, thank. Hare Krishna, alright, so anyone has any suggestion for, okay, I can see thumbs up also. Okay, fine, anyone else has any, um, suggestion? We need to, how we need to improvise this? Okay, fine, alright, so thank you very much, Jagat Guru Shri La Propaad ki, Jai Shri La Gurdev ki, Jai Nataigor Pemlande Hari Hari Bol. So me read five AM tomorrow for chanting and then eleven thirty, an extra instruction and then twelve o'clock for Bhagavad Gita, Hare Krishna.